All right, the time being six o'clock, or six oh three more accurately, and this being the Plymouth Select Board, I will call to order at this time this, the Tuesday, April 30th, 2024, meeting of Plymouth Select Board. Please join the board in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting of Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format, consistent with modifications made to the open meeting law by the legislature of the Commonwealth. We have members of the board joining us in person. We may have a member of the board joining us virtually over Zoom. Members of the public who wish to participate in or observe this meeting may do so by joining us here at the Great Hall at Town Hall at 26 Court Street, by joining us via Zoom on the Zoom login information that is on the website posted, or you may do so by watching us on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. You may join us just to observe. If you are over Zoom or in person, you may also join us for the purposes of making public comment when public comment comes up on our agenda. So that brings us into the open session. We have first on our agenda this evening, licenses and administrative notes. We have a few licenses to begin with. Does anyone have any questions in regards to the licenses, any members of the board? Questions or comments? Mr. Bledser?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Bledser has made a motion to approve the licenses as a group, one presumes? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Any discussion from members of the board as to whether or not we should approve the licenses as a group? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved the licenses as a group. That brings us into the administrative notes. There are a number of administrative notes. Before the start of the meeting, I received a request from one member of the board to take administrative notes seven through 11 individually. Do we have any other requests from board members to take any of the remaining one through six administrative notes?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, could I just address number two, excuse me, number three?
You may.
If you want to read that off.
Number, administrative note three reads, "The board will vote to approve a gift bequeathed to the DPW by Richard Quintle for an electric Clark Power Pro pallet jack with charging equipment."
I'd like to publicly thank Chairman Quintle. He's not with us tonight, and it's probably just as well because he wouldn't like me doing this publicly, but he has some family issues that he's taking care of at this time. But Mr. Quintle, once again, comes through and with this donation. It's a piece of equipment that we all know with what happened with the budget that we had to tighten our belts, but it's a piece of equipment that they desperately need, the DPW. It's an electric jack for charging equipments, farther pallet jack, excuse me, but something desperately needed. And once again, Dicky Quintle stepped up and has donated this. It's something he didn't have to do. And believe me, he'd probably get upset that I'm making this public, but I want to thank him. Thank you.
All right, our sincere thanks and apologies to Mr. Quintle. Any other comments or questions in regards to any of the other administrative notes numbered one through six? If not, I would allow a motion to move one through six as a group at this time?
Second.
Has been moved by Mr. Mahoney, seconded by Mr. Helm. Any discussion as to whether or not we should approve administrative notes one through six as a group? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved administrative notes one through six as a group. That brings us into administrative note seven. This is, "The board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Su Casa located at 30 Main Street." Mr. Bledser, did you have any questions or comments in regards to administrative note seven?
Is anybody here from Su Casa?
Hearing no response, it appears there is no one here.
Well, then I'd like to speak directly to, I believe Nick Mayo is on Zoom, and he's going to be the enforcement, the building department for this outdoor dining. Mr. Mayo?
Mr. Mayo?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Yes. So this outdoor dining is very important to our downtown for the revitalization of this downtown. We need to encourage this outdoor dining. And this year, we generously gave, we've given them this outdoor dining for the fee that we're giving it to them for. And I just expect that they utilize these parking spaces and that they adhere to the regulations that you set forth. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the plan here. They have four tables, four tables in the parklets, the two parking spaces, and they have three in the sidewalk next to the parklets. I just want to make it very clear that what happened last year doesn't happen again. Number one, there's no amplified music. They don't have a license for that. So they can't have entertainment outside, which they did last year. They can't have tables along the building, which they did last year. Okay, that'll be a violation of this plan that I see in front of me. I'm in favor of this plan, but, you know, I just expect that you keep an eye on this restaurant, not the restaurant, but just this, all of them, yes, but this in particular, because there was a lot of violations last year. And I wish they were here so I could speak with them, you know, face to face, but I hope they do very well with this outdoor dining, and I hope they just adhere to this so there's no problems with this space. Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve this unless anybody else has anything to say.
I believe you've said, oh, Mr. Helm?
Yep.
I stand corrected.
Nick, I think Mr. Bledser brought up something that we have not discussed in the last time. I'd like to hear from you. What is your plan for enforcement? Because you are in charge of enforcement, how often is somebody going to look at what's going on? I think we kind of fell a little short last year, so I was wondering how you plan to address that this year.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Helm. That's a great question. So last year, we had periodic inspections down there during the season, and that was typically managed by one of our field inspectors every week. So they would go down there once a week to walk through the parklets and the sidewalks seating. I think they did it on Tuesdays. We can absolutely make it more random this year if you like, but typically we try to handle it once a week, and then we'd field any complaints that came in with it from other businesses or anyone downtown who noticed they weren't abiding by the license agreement. The first step is we would give the business owner a verbal notice to correct the issue. If they did not correct the issue, then we would take that information and provide it to the town manager's office. So last year, Brad Brothers managed that, and he would make a decision on whether we needed to send out official written enforcement. And that written enforcement would come from town council, given that it's a license agreement, so under the authority of the board. So, and we have that worked out with Kate McKay, in-house town council, already to provide that process, and I'm helping facilitate that.
Any other, thank you, Mr. Mayo, any other questions, Mr. Helm?
None at the moment.
Mr. Bledser, did you have first question?
I just have one more thing to say. The reason why I was hoping they would be here is I wanted to impress upon them the responsibility that we have to everybody in the downtown area, the residents, the retail businesses, everybody matters to us. We don't want to have problems with disabilities, folks trying to get through. So we need to, we need to keep, they need to keep this space orderly and make it accessible to everybody. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. Any other questions from members of the board? Hearing none. Mr. Bledser, you had previously expressed a desire to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this plan, as I have it in front of me with four tables in the parklets, and there's three two-tops outside of the parklet right up against, right next to it.
Thank you. Any member of the board care to second?
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Any discussion from members of the board as to whether or not we should approve administrative note seven? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved administrative note seven. That brings us, fair enough. That brings us into administrative note eight. Administrative note eight reads, "The board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Honey Baby located at 47 Court Street." Mr. Bledser, did you have any questions or comments in regards to administrative note eight?
Yes, I do. And actually, I'd like to take eight and nine together. There are two restaurants that are both, they're owned by the same owners. That's the Tasty as well as the Honey Baby.
Okay, you may make comments in regards to both. We will vote on them separately.
Okay. I'd like to say, first of all, the Tasty, I'll comment on them. They have a great product. It's very popular. People love their restaurant. But I looked at the hours. They're only open 21 hours a week, and Honey Baby, I believe, is the same thing. So we have about 100 to 110 spaces in the downtown, and these two businesses have taken four parking spaces up for 21 hours a week. And if the owners were here in front of me, I'd feel more comfortable talking about it. But I just feel that we have a responsibility, again, to the other businesses. Neither one of these restaurants are open during the day. They don't open up till five o'clock. All that parking in the downtown is empty. That's four parking spaces. And I think they can be better used. So I don't want to penalize them, but I would, I would look for a compromise, and my compromise would be this, and if they were here, I could ask them this, is Honey Baby is, I see it advertised as a cocktail lounge. They have, they do have light apps, and I would take a compromise, is I would be agreeable to giving the parklets to the Tasty, because it's a dining, more dinners, and not give it to the Honey Baby, which is a cocktail lounge with light apps. Again, both places are only open 20 to 25 hours a week, and I just think there's better use for those parking spaces that, again, I'm going to say this, we're giving them the spaces. Just, it's really, the DPW is doing the setup, they're doing the breakdown, and we're doing this, we want them to succeed and be profitable, but I think it's just my belief that you have to be open a little bit more, more hours. Like, we're a tourist town. In the summertime, we need our businesses open. So that's my compromise. I would be in favor of Tasty, but I won't be in favor of Honey Baby. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. Do we, by any chance, we did inquire about Su Casa, but on Zoom, do we have anyone from either Honey Baby or the Tasty, same owners? No, we do not. So Mr. Bledser is correct. We are not joined by the owners of these establishments. Do we have any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? Mr. Helm?
Mr. Mayo, taking these two together, Honey Baby and the Tasty, when I look at the diagrams that they've given us of the planned layout, I guess my question is, I can't remember it. What is the width of the pedestrian walkway to be per the rules and regs?
Based on, thank you for letting me back in on this. So based on the rules and regs you guys have, it's five feet. So I have it in front of me here, yeah. It looks like the guidelines that you have, and I think it's stayed like this for the past couple of years. It's five feet along the sidewalk.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we have first off, admin note eight, "The board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Honey Baby located at 47 Court Street." Do I have a motion? Mr. Bledser?
If I can make a comment?
You may.
Just because I'm anticipating the motion. After communicating with the Commission on Inspection Services, he did state that the owners of the Tasty are contemplating not even using the parklet at all this year. So if there's going to be a motion to determine one or the other, you may want to just leave that up to the owner to decide which one they think is most relevant for their businesses.
Can I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bledser?
Can I make a suggestion? Then why don't we, can we table this or not?
We can't, because we plan to, the DPW plans to set these up on May 11th. I'm just looking at the calendar. Excuse me, on May 13th, and we are not meeting again until May 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it up to you how you want to handle this.
So, Mr. Brindisi, what is your level of, you believe that they will not want to use both, or they may not want to use both?
Well, so I'd say two things. So first, it appears that Mr. Bledser may make a motion to not allow the business owner who owns both of these establishments to have one of the parklets, given the fact that they're only operating 20 hours a week, 21 hours a week. So my suggestion is that instead of determining which business they want to have their parklet, perhaps you just vote one parklet for the two businesses and allow them to decide which one, whether they want it for Honey Baby or if they want it for the Tasty versus predetermining it.
That's how King Solomon would have done it.
I remember that story ending differently than intended. Any discussion, before we solicit a motion to King Solomon this, do we have any discussion from any members of the board as to, we know how Mr. Bledser feels. Do other members of the board wish to split the proverbial baby or vote up and down for admin notes eight and nine? Mr. Helm?
Well, just make a comment for the other board members' consideration. I just popped on to Google, and I looked up Honey Baby, and they're minimally, minimally, a restaurant. In fact, they refer to their food as snacks. So these are not entrees, they're snacks to be consumed while you're drinking. So, I mean, and I'm not making a judgment on it. Honey Baby wants to operate a bar out in, in public, out on the sidewalk. And I would just, that's my only comment between the two of them. One is clearly a restaurant, and one is a bar that wants to operate a bar out on the sidewalk.
So if asked to vote separately on the licenses, do you anticipate, Mr. Helm, knowing that your vote is your own and you could vote any way you choose, but do you know, do you have a preview of that you may vote in favor or against either of the particular licenses?
I'm disinclined to vote for a bar on the sidewalks of Plymouth.
Very well.
And Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, Mr. Bledser. Mr. Mahoney, did you have anything you'd like to add?
So we have two businesses here that are owned, have the same owner, correct? And if we deny them one of these, and they don't get any, does that mean that we're freeing that up for another business somewhere in the downtown area? We're not preventing another opportunity for another business, correct?
But the others didn't apply.
That's correct, right. Last year, we had nine businesses that applied. This year, we have five.
All right. So because of that, I'll come back to the reference I made earlier. The, I'm fully on board, the suggestion that the town manager made. I have no problem supporting one for the owner of the two businesses, and they can make the decision on their own.
Very well. So how about this? Mr. Bledser, would you care to make a motion that the board will vote?
I'd like to make a comment first for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Bledser.
I want to remind you that we had two businesses in, Tasty being one of them, that told us they weren't profitable with the outdoor dining. The other business, I won't name, but is not applying for outdoor dining, because they decided that they didn't need it. So that happened to us. You're in the meeting, and so keep that in mind. And keep in mind another thing, we're voting on outdoor dining. That's what we're voting on. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. With that in mind, Mr. Bledser, would you care to make a motion that the board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for either Honey Baby located at 47 Court Street or for the Tasty located at 42 Court Street?
I would love to make that motion and let the owners make, have that option to decide which business they want to have outdoor dining in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. It has been moved, and it has been seconded by Mr. Bledser and then Mr. Mahoney. The modified combined motion for what was originally eight and nine. Do we have any discussion from any members of the board? Hearing no others, I will say that I was in favor of approving both, but since I'm only one vote, I'd rather see one of them get it than neither of them get it. I would note that we didn't put any provisos on the licenses that the businesses had to be open for certain periods of time or provide a certain level of edible items to be considered. Nevertheless, a partial victory is better than a total defeat. So for that reason, I will vote in favor of the modified motion. Any discussion further? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, once again alphabetically through the roll. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And a vote of three to one with no abstentions, the modified motion is approved. That brings us into admin note 10, having previously resolved admin note nine. Admin note 10 reads, "The board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Uva Wine Bar located at 46 Main Street." Mr. Bledser, did you have any questions or comments in regards to administrative note 10?
I have no questions, because I don't believe anybody's here from Uva. I just have comments that I want to make sure that they understand. That, I'm looking at what they have. They have three tables in the parking area, and they have three tables outside of that with plenty of room on the sidewalk. And that's the plan. They don't have any entertainment license for outside. That's what they have. So I want them to keep in mind. And I just want to remind everybody, all the license holders, that when, you cannot serve drinks outside during parades. And that is something that has happened. It was on Facebook. To me, it was embarrassing, and so I just want to remind all license holders that we can't do that. So with that said, I have no problem with this seating, this outside seating here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. And just to verify, we don't have anyone from Uva on the Zoom either? Okay. Any other questions or comments from members of the board in regards to administrative note 10 prior to me soliciting a motion? Hearing and seeing none, I will solicit said motion.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bledser has moved. Does anyone care to second?
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded that we approve administrative note 10. Any discussion from members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved administrative note 10. That brings us into administrative note 11. "The board will vote to approve an outdoor dining license for Brewster Bar located at 46 Main Street." Do we have anyone from Brewster Bar in attendance? We do not. Mr. Bledser, did you have any questions or comments in regards to administrative note 11?
No, they have a nice printed out plan of what they want to do. They have, looks like they have four tables again and three next to them. Looks like there's plenty of room. It's handicap accessible. They have no history that I know of, so I have no problem with these, with these, with this business having their outside seating.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from any other members of the board in regards to administrative note 11? Hearing and seeing none, I will solicit a motion for its approval.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bledser has moved.
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Any discussion as to whether or not we should approve administrative note 11? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have approved administrative note 11. That brings us into our agenda proper. We have first item on our main agenda would be conservation commission appointments. We have one one-year term that we have four applicants for. So are we joined by the four applicants? First of all, Mr. Paul Denoncourt. All right, if, Mr. Denoncourt, if you'd like to take the podium, say a few words about yourself, why you're interested in the position, and then we would open it up to members of the board for any questions that we have, and then we'll do the same for the other applicants, and then after that, we'll vote. But you have the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen. My name is Paul Denoncourt. I'm a retired physician. I practiced orthopedic surgery for 30 some odd years, moved to Plymouth just before COVID hit. My plan in retirement was to be active in community service. So when COVID hit, I was a COVID healthcare volunteer, and I've been active in other organizations around here. I grew up in Pembroke, where I was an Eagle Scout. I taught nature conservation-related merit badges at Camp Squano here in Plymouth, including one called Conservation of Natural Resources, and later became program director and assistant camp director of Camp Squano. I practiced in Maine, and while there, I got my, being interested in outdoor activities, I got my Maine guide license. So I would take people into the North Main Woods, also Quebec, for whitewater canoe trips. In 2022, I hiked the Appalachian Trail, all 2,200 miles. It took me six months, but during that time, I basically drank out of rivers and streams and ponds for six months, filtering the water, of course, but it gave me a great appreciation for the value of our aquifers and water supply. So I'm interested in this position because it's kind of the intersection between public health, which is a position I'm interested in, and protecting our natural environment. Clean water and clean air are necessary aspects of public health. So it seems to be the logical combination of the two. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Denoncourt? Mr. Mo?
Mr. Denoncourt, is it correct that you had applied prior when there was kind of maybe a little bit of controversy with the appointment, post-appointment, a few months ago?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from any other members of the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Denoncourt.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments and willingness to answer questions. That brings us to the next applicant, Maura Flaherty. Are we joined by Ms. Flaherty? We are. Ms. Flaherty, please, as Mr. Denoncourt did, say a few words about, you know, your background, why you're interested in the position, and then we'll ask you some questions if we choose to do so.
Okay. My name's Maura Flaherty. I work for Massachusetts Maritime Academy. I work in the marine science department, and we work with eight different towns in their stormwater infrastructure, and that's all to protect the Buzzards Bay and the shellfish beds. So I've been reading up on Plymouth, and I'm very passionate about the environment, and I want to continue my career this way, and I think these two would go hand in hand.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Flaherty?
Ms. Flaherty?
Ms. Flaherty, you have a great resume. I see Mass Maritime, which is close by. How long have you been in Plymouth?
I've been in Plymouth for sixteen years.
Sixteen years, okay. So you're pretty familiar with the needs of the community. You know, we have some water issues, and you're pretty familiar with everything we're dealing with.
Yes, I've been reading up a lot in the news.
Yeah, and it's important, there's a lot of people very involved in this community as far as the environment. So conservation is a very, very important committee. The one thing I just want to impress on anybody that's on a border committee is two, the letter R, the two Rs, being reasonable and respectful, and always remembering that you're dealing with your fellow residents and taxpayers, and I just want to keep that in mind.
Of course.
So anyway, thank you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you. Any other questions from other members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Flaherty.
Thank you, everyone.
That brings us to the next applicant, Amber Salvage. Are we joined by Ms. Salvage? Once again, Ms. Salvage, if you could take the mic, say a few words about yourself, and then we will ask you any questions we choose to ask. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I lost my voice today. My name is Amber Salvage. I am somewhat of a new resident of Plymouth here. I moved here two years, actually going on three now. But I have a background in biology and aquaculture. I started my career off in natural resources as a AmeriCorps member for Barnstable County. From there, I was a deputy shellfish constable for the town of Ipswich, then became the shellfish constable and natural resource officer for the town of Dennis. So my background, I love conservation, natural resources. That's what I did for about eight years before transitioning into my current role at the Marine Biological Laboratory, working in the Division of Research. And I have a large background of working with conservation commissions and kind of being the on-the-ground person that goes and has investigated different breaking of bylaws and things like that. So I have a wealth of knowledge from understanding the Massachusetts Wetland Act and of course shellfish resources in general.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Salvage from members of the board? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Salvage.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. That brings us to the last applicant, Sarah Traynor. Are we joined by Ms. Traynor? We are not. Fair enough. All right, well, we are unable to hear from or ask questions of Ms. Traynor. So that brings it back to the board. Any discussion from members of the board before I call for a vote? Mr. Mahoney?
My vote will be going to Mr. Denoncourt. We, and I said the same thing to the, I think, last Tuesday, and at our meeting last week, and certainly I reiterated it Thursday night, you know, we look at process, and whenever there's a flaw in the process, it's dependent on, you know, the respective committee or board to look, how do we make improvements? And we've done that. Mr. Denoncourt is extremely qualified, as are the other three applicants, and I believe the last applicant actually served three or six years on the Conservation Committee before. But Mr. Denoncourt applied a few months ago. Obviously, post-appointment, there was a significant variable that the board was not aware of that came to light. Because of that, this was reposted, and we are here tonight. So I applaud Mr. Denoncourt for putting his name forward again, and I'll be supporting his candidacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Mr. Bledser?
Again, as you said, all three candidates that appeared before us have great resumes, and that's the beauty of Plymouth, the experience and the knowledge of residents, the volunteerism is unbelievable there. So I like personally Maura Flaherty. I liked her resume the best because I think she's more local, her issues, more local issues. She's worked out of Mass Maritime with different issues that, you know, affect local issues that we have here. Mr. Denoncourt is a physician, doctor, I mean, his resume is great, but he's more in the medical field than what I'm looking for in this conservation position. So I will be supporting Maura Flaherty. Not that any of the three candidates couldn't have done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bledser. Any other discussion? If there's no one else, I will add and echo my colleagues that it's, this is once again an opportunity where the board has more qualified applicants than we have positions to put them in. So that's a good position for us, but an unfortunate position for most of the applicants. However, I would encourage any applicant that doesn't make it this time to apply again when a future opening on the Conservation Commission comes up or on a similar border committee. We have upwards of forty boards and committees throughout town government, many of whom are in a near constant state of looking for additional help. So I would encourage people that want to get involved not to be discouraged if their first attempt to do so is not successful. It is my intention to vote for Mr. Denoncourt, having just said that, since he applied previously and then reapplied. So I'd like to practice what I preach in terms of encouraging people that have the qualifications to stay interested and continue to put themselves out there. So that is my intention, but I could easily see myself voting for the other applicants if the situation were different or if more positions were available. Any other discussion before I call for a vote? Seeing none, I will go through our roll, and I will ask each member who they wish to catch their one vote for, as there is one one-year term available. So out of the field of candidates, Mr. Bledser, which candidate would you care to vote for?
I'll vote for Maura Flaherty.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Mr. Denoncourt.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Denoncourt.
And myself, Mr. Denoncourt. So in a vote of, with three votes, Mr. Denoncourt has won the appointment. However, we congratulate and thank Ms. Flaherty, Ms. Salvage, and of course, Ms. Traynor for applying. Please do continue to apply in the future for future openings, and do not be discouraged. You were all very well-qualified candidates. All right, having completed the Conservation Commission appointment, that brings us into our next agenda item, that being commercial shellfish policy by Chad Hunter, our harbor master, here to present on this tongue twister.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction and the time tonight. First order of business is the Select Board or Town Muscle Policy. This is part of the effort of the town manager to kind of take a look at all of the policies. This one dated back to January sixth, nineteen eighty-one, hot off the press. So I did provide, we did a review and kind of looked to what changes we should include with an updated policy. And I'll just kind of cover the major changes. You do have the entire policy in your packets, and Harbor Committee did review this policy and vote to approve the draft March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. So one of the biggest, or the major change of this is instead of just being defined as a muscle policy, we went to a commercial shellfish policy. We already have razor, commercial razor licenses that were issued in the fall of twenty twenty-three. So we wanted to include those and also provide some flexibility in the future if there are other species of shellfish that we want to issue these licenses to. So that was one of the major changes. The original policy not only dealt with the number of licenses that could be issued, we included that in the new policy, but also sort of a use-it-or-lose-it clause that if they were exercising the license, that they could renew and keep that in good order. But if they did not, that that license could be pulled back and issued to somebody else. So we did include that language in the new policy as well. One of the discussion points that we had at Harbor Committee was, originally it was a resident-only fishery, but the discussion we had at the Harbor Committee level, they wanted to leave that open to the Board of Selectmen to have resident preference, but also allow the board to approve non-residents for these fisheries. So ultimately, if you had five licenses available and you have five residents apply, they would get sort of the first look at those. But then if, say, only three residents apply and there's five licenses, and maybe two non-residents apply for those, they could be issued the remainder of those licenses. We did include in here that the shellfish constable has the authority to suspend the commercial license due to a severe violation or public health concern. So we would work jointly with the state. The commercial shellfish licenses allow them to sell this product to the market to be consumed. So if there's any issue with tags that are switched or areas that they're fishing where there'd be a public health concern, we did include the ability for the shellfish constable to suspend that commercial license. Division of Marine Fisheries would also do the same, and they're going to halt any sort of sales of that product and probably recall it as well, so it's not out there in the market that could be consumed. So we did include that, and obviously, the license holder can come back before the Select Board to ask for that suspension to be lifted and the license reinstated. The last major piece to this was the outline, a timeline for people not only to renew, but for people that are interested to state their interest in how we would assign any licenses that do become available. So right now, it's sort of ad hoc. If somebody is interested, they'll, I'll usually hear from them, and then, you know, we come before the board. But we wanted to have some form of a process. We don't want to get to a waiting list. We have quite a few waiting lists already. So we basically allowed renewals. If somebody had an existing license, they could state that they want to renew before November first, and then November first after, if somebody was interested, they would, it would be handled on a first-come, first-served basis. And if there are any available licenses for that next calendar year, they would be offered in the order that they reached out. And no waiting list, so each year it would sort of reset, and we'd follow that process. So that kind of covers most of the changes that we included, but if you do have any questions, be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Any other, well, any questions for Mr. Hunter in regards to the shellfish policy? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I will solicit a motion that we approve the shellfish policy as presented. Mr. Helm?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Helm has moved, Mr. Bledser has seconded, that we approve the shellfish policy as presented. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bledser, how do you?
Mr. Chairman, if I just could, can we ensure that, for the record, that this also is rescinding the nineteen eighty-one muscle policy?
Okay.
I just want, for the record, in case folks have to come back and look at the minutes thirty years from now.
All right. Mr. Helm, by any chance, did your motion include the rescission of the nineteen eighty-one muscle policy?
Short answer, yes, it did.
All right. And Mr. Bledser, did your second include that as well?
It will.
All right, it does. So this is to approve the shellfish, commercial shellfish policy and to rescind the nineteen eighty-one muscle policy. Any discussion from any members of the board? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Bledser, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we have approved the commercial shellfish policy and rescinded the nineteen eighty-one muscle policy. Thank you. So that brings us into the town boat ramp update, also from harbor master Chad Hunter.
This is quite convenient.
Yes.
Thank you again. So tonight, I have a, it's very picture-heavy, not a ton of content to cover, but we wanted to provide you with an update on the town boat ramp project. I had a meeting with the chief and the town manager about a month ago and thought it would be good to be here and kind of provide this update. So here we go. So thank you for your time, and we obviously want to start by talking numbers. So this is kind of the project by the numbers. So we had an original budget of one point six million for this project. David Gould and I went to Seaport Economic Council, and we're able to get a one million dollar award. And then luckily, when we went out to bid, the numbers came in excellent. We had a lot of interest in this project, and the bid award was to New England Building and Bridge, also known as NEB, for one point two-three million. So this, this project was to protect and preserve commercial access. We were rebuilding the, what was referred to as the old town boat ramp, kind of behind Lobster Hut and between the maritime facility and the parking area. We also replaced floating docks, and there is some minor dredging component to this. And the reasons Seaport awarded, one million dollars is their maximum award, by the way. The reason they awarded this grant, not only have we been the beneficiaries of a number of Seaport Council grants, but this ramp was to preserve an area for commercial landings. So whether that's commercial lobster or aquaculture, they would have a space that is not available to the recreational boater, but sort of reserved for their use and access. A major component to that is aquaculture has, there's what's called a Vibrio Control Plan. So in the summer months, they have a very strict harvest time where they harvest, they have to get to icing immediately, shade the product, and they need to get to mechanical refrigeration as soon as possible. This is a consumable product that's usually consumed raw, so it's a food-grade product, and they want to make sure that it's not building up Vibrio, which can make you quite ill if consumed. So this is sort of the fast lane to make sure those oysters get to refrigeration and to protect not only the growers, but the people that are consuming oysters from Vibrio. We've had a few outbreaks in the past, and it's a major process when you have outbreaks. I think back, a few years ago, Duxbury had some oysters that caused a bit of a Vibrio outbreak, and they recall all of the product that's in the market from the three shared bay systems, so Duxbury, Kingston, Plymouth. Probably hundreds of thousands of oysters, and they were all recalled. And then typically, there's like a closure window of up to two weeks after that, so very important that you don't have Vibrio cases. Not only affects the grower and the harvester, the people that consume it, obviously, it affects them, but then all of the growers in the three-bay system. This is the schematic of the ramp, and just kind of dovetailing into some, we dredged this area, so you can see in here, these contour lines goes from very shallow to ten feet deep. That was a dredging project that we did a couple of years ago with AGM, and that project was also the beneficiary of state dredge, dredging funds. So this, not only is this kind of going over the boat ramp project, but it ties together so many other projects in the area, and we'll kind of touch on those. This ramp, and you'll see in the pictures coming up, used to end right about here. So you'd come down a concrete boat ramp, and then this was just muddy flats to get out to there. Wasn't usable at low tide, probably even half tide. So this boat ramp is accessible even at low tide with the dredging and the change in the configuration. So big improvement. And you can kind of make it out, it's a bit in the shadows here, but the old boat ramp ended here. You can see this is just mud. This is kind of a low-tide cycle, so this is what it looked This is kind of a low tide cycle, so this is what it looked like pre-conditions. In this slide here, they're actually starting to dredge the toe of the ramp, so they're using an excavator to dig to kind of connect the toe to that dredged area, and you can see the material over here. So the first step for them, once they did the minor dredging, they, this is like an articulated concrete mat. That goes the toe of the boat ramp, and it prevents any prop wash from undermining the toe of the ramp and causing it to sag or settle. So that was the first order of business. And again, you can see, you know, this again is a low tide cycle. You can see there's really no pitch there. It's just kind of flat and mud, and you don't want to back a vehicle through this. And you probably can't launch a boat at that tide. So this is just a culmination of pictures that, different stages in the process. The first two-thirds of the boat ramp were pre-cast concrete panels. So in the upper right here, you can see the pre-cast panels. They go in quite easily, and they end up bolting together, and they fill those cracks eventually with grout. And here, they're kind of finishing, I think that might have been the last panel that we were putting in, so you can see the length of the ramp. And then the picture on the left, from about here up, was cast in place. So they form the rebar, they pour the structure. So they're, I think, pouring the last panel in that picture. The other major component to this was the replacement of the floating docks. So again, you kind of have a series of photos here. On the left was the existing. Those are eight-by-20-foot wood floats, five of them that basically make up an eight-by-100-foot floating dock with four wood piles supporting that. This was somewhat makeshift. We had money for four piles, and we reused some of the floating docks. And this was a major connection point for us, because that gangway goes right up to the base of the maritime facility. So that was our connection to the sea, let's say. And we did make it work for the couple of years that they were in place. But as you can see, the middle slide is the first pile that's getting set. And then the slide on the right is actually looking back towards the maritime facility. So you can see that first pile that's been set. And then you can obviously see the relation, the ramp is on the left-hand side, right here. And then you get the maritime facility and the gangway connection. These floats are super robust. There's three sections totaling about 185 feet in length. They're much wider, they're much heavier. These will stay in year-round. They don't get hauled out, and they will be available year-round for people to use. They, really low maintenance, they're concrete floats. They're expected to last 35-plus years. So hopefully, these went in, the piles went in. We won't be touching these, moving them around, hauling them out for a long time. So this is a pretty important slide, and we wanted to speak to the additions that we made. So not only did, you can see before and after. So before is on the left, after is on the right. And you can see the, obviously, the difference here with the new floats. We were able to reuse three of the existing wood floats and move them over to expand some space here. So just kind of going through the numbers, the commercial space, which is associated with the boat ramp, which is this orange piece here, that's 50 feet that we allocated that will remain open for boats using this boat ramp. So that's dedicated to that use. The 15-minute space, which was widely popular, we preserved that right down to, we had 60 feet before, and we kept 60 feet in this new configuration. We could probably use double that, but 60 feet seemed to work. It's kind of pickup-drop-off, it kept rotating out, and many people would use that space. The Harbor Master side, we went from 100 to about 132. So we were able to gain a little, 32 feet of dockage there, which we've always had to sort of double-stack our boats, so that should work out quite well for us. But the big winner here is tender space. And I'm sure everybody's heard about tender space and tender crowding. We were able to basically increase the tender space by 128 feet. So we added 128 feet of linear dock face for tenders. So that's all the pink-purple color. This whole backside and the inside of this new configuration is for tenders. So not only were we able to lift, we had a moratorium on selling new tender permits because we didn't have space, but hopefully, this provides some breathing room for everybody that has tenders. So a major improvement there. Please and the launch, we were able to add some space. They were a little crowded, so we were able to give each four more feet on either side to make a total of eight feet to help that situation out as well. So this kind of, this transformed this corner where I would say just about at capacity for the number of floating docks and space that we have here. And obviously, we haven't used this yet through one season, so we're really interested to see how this all works out this upcoming season. One of the other important features of the floats that we sort of designed for the Harbor Master space, we were actually talking to the Draken, the Viking ship up in the upper right-hand corner there, about coming back to Plymouth. I'm not sure if they will be, but we have a history of bringing in unique ships. You get the Mars on the lower left, the autonomous research ship. You have the Lynx where we put them on the boat ramp. That was a couple of years ago. And then we had the Coast Guard Cutter that came up to do tours, which was amazing. These floating docks give us the flexibility to have these ships visit Plymouth and sort of highlight their visit, have them be accessible. So if they're on the pier, it's really difficult to get people from the pier to the ship. The floating dock that we put in, that large concrete floating dock can handle the foot traffic safely, has plenty of flotation and buoyancy. You could probably put 100 people, and it wouldn't disrupt it. But it really makes these visiting ships more accessible to the public. So I'm not sure who's going to be the first to use it. We were hoping that, like I said, the Draken would return this year, and we would be able to use that space for that ship. But I looked back, this was only the past few years, and the number of different types of ships and unique ships that have visited Plymouth, I think, has been tremendous. So we look to continue that. And those docks just provide us that flexibility. We're able to host these ships and not be in the way of the commercial enterprise on Town Wharf. We're able to have the cruise ship visiting at the same time as we would have one of these other ships in port. So it does provide us that flexibility that was definitely needed. And this shot, Rob Beck told, the Assistant Harbor Master, actually grabbed this shot last week, and I wanted to include it because it, not only was it a really nice shot and sort of highlighting everything we're talking about here, but as I looked at this, I started to kind of look through the picture to see all of the different projects that we've done within a pretty short period of time. So if you start, let's say, like up here on the right, so obviously, we did the T-Warf project back in 2017. We dredged this whole area in 2020. We did the Bulkhead replacement, which is just north of Woods, kind of off to the right here, 2023. We did the town boat ramp replacement, which we talked about, and it's kind of at our backs, and the floating docks here completed. And then to the left, the Leo de Marsh boat ramp, that was replaced in 2018. So all of those projects have sort of come together to sort of bring this to fruition and have this super-accessible and usable space for boaters. And so the boat ramp project is really more than just the boat ramp project. I think it's kind of the completion of all these different pieces that come together in this area. And just for figures, out of all these projects, we did get about $8.5 million from the state to offset the cost to the taxpayers. And that came through partnerships with the Seaport Economic Council, Housing and Economic Development, and the Mass Office of Fishing and Boating Access. So really great to kind of see this transformation, and I guess that's what that picture sums up with the rainbow there. So that's all I have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Blitzer, did you have, okay?
Chad, job well done, well done.
Thank you.
Okay, the importance, we all know the importance of our harbor, and what you've done is incredible, especially with all the grant money that you've gotten, so the taxpayers haven't had to fund this. But I know we're not done, but I know the state boat ramp is something that I'm hoping that someday you'll be working on that too, so I hope we get that. But in the meantime, one of the goals in the Harbor Committee was getting more tenders. You've more than doubled that. It's almost two and a half times the size now, so that's, so they'll be happy. So that's a good thing. So anyway, great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blitzer. Any other questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us into the next item on our agenda, that being the Plymouth Water Division Water and Sewer Rates. We are joined by William Coyle, Plymouth DPW Director. Mr. Coyle?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. DPW doesn't have any rainbows, photos, but I wish we did. But we were here a few weeks ago presenting the findings of our water and sewer rate study. And I think we had several items that we had gone over that evening, and it seemed like it was all things water and sewer that evening. But the results of that study came back with the recommendation of a 9% revenue increase on the waterside and a 5% increase on the sewer side. This was projected increase to cover the capital costs going forward, our operation, operating and maintenance costs in addition to maintaining a healthy retained earnings balance. During that meeting, there were several questions that came up, very good questions, relative to the number of customers that were in the tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, and tier-four levels. So we've gone back to our consultant, we've met internally, and went over those numbers. In addition to, there was questions relative to the number of customers on different size meters that we had as well. So with that information and additional information, Toby Fetter, who was here again this evening, can go over some of the findings and present his report to you as well. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm going to open this and run it on my computer simultaneously, because there's some smaller numbers, and I don't want to be squinting across the room, if that's okay?
Okay.
Okay. So as Bill just alluded to, just coming back and re-centering the discussion, because I know there was discussions about 9% rate increase and things along those lines. But basically, the recommendations that came out of the study, they cover the next five years of what's going to be needed, and they apply for, or they are needed to cover the operational costs, the expected capital, and then obviously, any debt that's existing for the utilities currently. The assumption, one of the assumptions in all of the recommendations that we're going to look at when you look at rates tonight, is that they are applied for all four billing cycles, which really means they need to be adopted each April, because we need the new rates to be applied to the first bill that goes out after the change of the fiscal cycle. And that's the reason we're looking forward to answering any questions and hopefully getting a favorable vote tonight. So again, on the water and sewer, as Bill alluded to, so we have, the first part of the study is really figuring out how much you need to raise in order to basically pay for the entire operations of both utilities. On the waterside, we went through that exercise, and basically, we're recommending for the next four years, a 9% increase in revenue. That's not rates, we'll get to that in a minute. And then in the final year of the five-year period, it only needs a 2% increase. And then on the sewer side, we're going to be recommending a 5% increase annually for the next five years. And again, that's on revenues, not on rates. So, and then we want to sort of revisit two of the concepts that we're going to be asking you to take a look at, because they impact what the rates are going to be for the customers. And the first is the current tier differentials, and we'll talk a little bit about that. I've got a slide on it. And then the second is considering adopting industry-standard connection size factors. And that basically impacts your fixed charges here in town on both sides of the utility. So to Bill's point, this is hard to read, because it's a lot of data and there's a lot of small numbers. But on the left-hand side are basically the customer counts by meter size, meaning your connection size to both the water and sewer system. So looking at the very top of the left-hand table there, for 5/8-inch, of the overall 14,000 and change customers that are connected to the Plymouth Water System, 13,295 are at the 5/8-inch level. Okay? And you can see the numbers drop precipitously from that point. Generally speaking, the larger building, the larger customer, the larger the connection. And that's usually meter sizes set by expected or actual demands that are placed on the system by the customer based upon their building type. And so to that point, on both sides, it's a little bit less dramatic on the sewer side, but it's also the vast preponderance of customer accounts in Plymouth are at the 5/8-inch level. And they basically, one of the challenges about that is because of the way that your tier structures that were, pardon me, your connection size differentials are currently set, right now, you generate quite a bit more percentage off of fixed, small fixed charge customers than most utilities based on industry standards. So that's just sort of a couple of concepts on fixed charges and your customer counts by connection size. On the right-hand side, what you'll see is a breakdown of three years' worth of actual billing data for residential customers. And just to give you an idea, you know, we've broken out in, at the table at the top, the percentage of bills that go out with the tier. So for example, in tier-one, 38% of the bills that are issued by Plymouth every year are expected to not exceed tier-one usage, meaning they will never pay tier-two through four rates. And in that tier, about 40% of the overall usage in the, in the community is seen in those accounts or is seen in that tier. So of every 100 gallons of water that's sold by the Plymouth Water Department, 40 of those gallons are sold at a tier-one rate. Similarly, tier-two, 39% of the bills go out where the top gallon in a bill is in tier-two. And in tier-two, about 25% of the gallons that the Water Department sells and the Sewer Department bills are basically in that tier, and similarly across. But basically, the big takeaway is the vast majority, or not vast, but the large majority of both water and sewer bills, over three-quarters of the water and sewer bills, are issued with only billings in tier-one and tier-two. And then just to give you an understanding of some of the demands at the top end, about seven of the, 7% of the bills issued in Plymouth have their top gallon billed in tier-four. And tier-four usage is about 20% of the water that's sold in Plymouth. So from the standpoint of driving conservation, obviously, there is a small number of customers in bills. These are all residential customers that are using a substantial proportion of water in comparison to others in the community. So to the two options, or pardon me, to the two variables that I mentioned. So the first one is the tier differentials. Let me just explain how these work. Let me just explain how these work. So, in the top table there, we basically have the tier, the amount of water, meaning the volume of water per quarter that is in the tier. Next to that, we actually have it expressed in a concept that most Americans can understand, which is gallons per day. So, for example, in the first tier, you get up to 10 CCF per quarter in that tier. If you use 82 gallons per day for an entire quarter, you will use 10 CCF. And so, this is the basis of the bill. Now, moving further to the right, talking about tier differentials. Now, all of the numbers in this are expressed as ratios of the 5/8 inch customer fixed charge. So, your 5/8 inch fixed customer fixed charge, right now, I believe it's $25 on water. In Tier Two, it would be 1.57 times 25, so it's $38 or something along those lines, I believe, and so forth down the table. And what you can see in the central section of the table are what your actual tier differentials are. And then, basically, these are all on volumetric. So, I think I just mixed that up. Did I say this was on connection charges? Yeah, my apologies. Top one's on volumetric. So, we're on volumetric. The tier differentials, these are the percentage premiums that the Tier One water or Tier Two water costs against Tier One water, and so forth. And then, we're recommending we reset those tiers, so that for every dollar a gallon costs in Tier One, right now, it costs $1.57 in Tier Two and $1.60 in Tier Three. We're recommending that we basically reset the differentials to the value shown in the right-hand portion of the table. And there's a couple of reasons for it. Right now, you can see there's a very small differential in the tier size between what you charge for Tier Two water and Tier Three water. That really takes away any form of sort of conservation incentive. And it also, additionally, if you don't have sufficient tier separation, it can, you know, it basically will, over time, it can boost the lowest, the rate on the lowest tier water as well. So, but once again, we're recommending we go to new tier differentials on the volumetric charges, and the goal is to reestablish conservation incentive by making a true difference between the various tiers. So, that's the first concept. The second one is on fixed charges. And so, the American Waterworks Association, which is referred to on the table, they publish a set of what are called capacity size factors that are used by many utilities across the industry, across the nation, to actually set the relative fixed charges that are applied to customers with various size connections. They're based basically on, the intent is to ensure that basically, larger customers are paying their fair share commensurate with the demands they place on common systems. And so, what you can see in this table is your connection size factors for fixed charges on water increase from 1 to 14 based on tier, or based on connection size. But on sewer, they're flat. Whether you have an 8-inch sewer connection or a 5/8 inch connection, you pay an $87.50 quarterly charge as your base charge in sewer. And so, what this does is it, obviously, in the opinion of most in the industry, is it makes a situation where larger customers are not contributing, certainly on a fixed revenue basis, for their commensurate demands on the system. And so, what you can see in the right-hand table, and these are numbers that are referred to in all of the other recommendations that we'll talk about, are what the AWW standard factors are. And so, for example, on a 3/8 inch meter, that person in water is paying basically, for every dollar of fixed charge that a 5/8 inch meter has, they're paying $5.2. But on sewer, they're paying the exact same thing as the person with the 5/8 inch meter. And really, what ends up happening here is because, as part of our recommendations, there was not a desire to try and drive more revenue onto the fixed charge, because the percentages that Plymouth currently derives are right around industry standard guidelines. The idea here is if you fix this, you'll reapportion where revenue's coming on a more fair basis for most of your customers. And remember, as I said, you know, most of your customers are in the first three lines of these tables. And by reapportioning and making the revenue collection from your customer base a little bit more like industry standards, or basically taking them to industry standards, whether immediately or over time, you can benefit most customers, appropriately assign true cost to larger customers, and result in maybe some easier rate increases for most customers. So, what does that look like? So, we have three options, and the table for water and sewer are going to look incredibly similar, and they're very hard to read. But this table is only for fiscal '25 recommendations. And so, we basically have, on the, going left to right, we have the volumetric charges, what they are for each of the tiers, and 0 to 10 is Tier One, 10 to 22.5 is Tier Two, et cetera, and then the current charges for those. If you take the Tier One, the option one, which is the recommended option, which is the adoption of AWA connection size factors on your fixed charges, and you reapportion the tier differentials, as we talked on the prior slide, then these are the, end up being the rates in the third column to the right, that you end up, you go from 189 on your Tier One water volumetric charge to 203, and so forth down the table. And then, on the bottom section of the table, you're looking at the minimum charges. Right now, as I said, your 5/8 inch pays a 25. That's true all the way through a 1-inch meter. And you can see what we would be recommending those charges changed to for each of the sizes. And what you'll notice there is for 5/8 inch meters, because you're going to be resetting the value of the larger meters on fixed charges, and you're not trying to change the overall revenue amount that comes out of fixed charges, it allows you to basically lower the Tier One charges. Not at the expense of anyone else, because remember, all of the charges that are on larger than 5/8 inch meters are multipliers based on industry standards. It just allows you, since you are generating more revenue appropriately off of larger customers, we're able to lower the, basically, the fixed charge on smaller customers while maintaining the exact same revenue, or even, in truth, growing the revenue target sum. Okay, so, that's probably a little complex, or at least convoluted for people who aren't used to working on rates, but it basically works exactly the same in the next two sections of the table. Option Two is what our rate recommendations are. If you keep your existing rate structure, and just want to say, you want to know what? This is all too complex. We're just going to keep our existing rates, and we're going to increase rates for next year on everything in a way that will make sure that we generate enough revenue. As you can see, the percentage charges that are instituted are obviously significantly larger. You'll notice that on the fixed charges, they go up by 9%. That's the revenue increase target. On the volumetric charges, they go up by slightly less, and that's because within our assessment, we've included what we see for traditional volumetric growth in Plymouth when we are calculating what the rates need to be. So, that's really, option Two is keep your existing structure and just adjust the rates, and it'll work. All of the, all three of these options generate the exact same revenue. So, and then, the third option, which really came out of the discussion we had two weeks ago, so we were talking about this, is basically taking a blended approach where we, well, not so much a blended approach, but we're taking an approach where we are moving to option one, but we allow it to happen over three years, so that the fixed charge changes on larger customers come in over a period of time and don't surprise people. And we do have some slides later that'll show you what that looks like over the full three-year blend. But what it allows you to do is see, well, here's what your, the alternate structure, meaning the three-year blend-in of option one, is going to look like for next year, because that's all we're talking about tonight is fiscal '25 rates. So, these are really the three options that we have. Are there any questions?
So, does alternate option one also meet the capital needs?
Yes.
In the near term, or just over the three-year transition?
So, the alternate option one ends up becoming the exact same as alternate one or as option one after year three. It just, it gets to the redistribution, or not redistribution, but it gets to the new way of collecting your revenues over a three-year period, meaning you basically transition one-third at a time. But by the fourth year, you're basically at the exact same revenue generation characteristics of option one and would remain there, simply because it's the industry standards. Is that...
Okay.
I can sometimes, I sometimes feel like I'm talking around people, so my apologies.
Well, you want, you want to go up 9%.
On revenue.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So, but if you're phasing in that, so...
Remember, so, like I said, so, we have a financial model for this.
Yes.
And so, we phase it in one-third at a time, but since both options are generating the same revenue, if we phase from one to the other, if we went halfway between them, we would be generating the exact same revenue still. So, and the model confirms this, so...
Mr. Helm?
Thank you for the presentation. On several occasions, you have said, "We're talking about a 9% increase in revenue, not in rates."
That's correct.
What's the increase in rates for the 13,000 people that you mentioned in Tier One?
So, right there, you can see it. It's about 7.4% on your volumetric charges.
So, that is a rate increase. That is not a revenue increase.
That is a rate increase, but on the volumetric charges. On the fixed charges, you'll notice their bill, on the fixed portion of their bill goes down by 7.1%.
Okay. The average, the average water user?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You're going up 7.4% on rates. You're going down 7.1% on the fixed charges. It's not a wash. What is the difference between, relative in someone's bill, between the difference between the fixed charges in an average bill and the volumetric charges?
So, right now...
Because you're only giving back less than $2, okay, on the fixed charges. So, how does that...
So, let's say you were at the top end of Tier One. So, the top end of Tier One right now costs you $1,890 a quarter. It's 1.89 times 10 units, right? And you're paying a fixed charge of $25. That top-end customer looking at the rates that are recommended at option one would pay $20.30 in volumetric charges and $23.22. Now, I haven't done that exact math to this question. We have a slide that addresses the idea and concept later in the presentation. But it does, for smaller users, very significantly decrease the amount of overall cost impact. And you'll see that in some of the later charts.
But it doesn't, nobody gets away unscathed here. Everybody's rates overall, fixed and volumetric, are going up in this proposal.
So, in water, it's fairly close to a wash for smaller customers, but what you'll see is in sewer, when I say smaller, basically up to the 50% level, as we saw.
Yeah. Let's not talk about sewer, because the large percentage of Plymouth residents are not on the sewer system.
Okay.
So, let's not, let's not even bring that in. Let's just talk about waters, water. You mentioned that this is necessary due to some improvements in the...
So, it's...
Excuse me, I'm just, I'm spacing on the word, on the, just improvements in...
Capital?
Capital, thank you.
You're welcome.
Capital improvements. Would you outline those capital improvements that are being suggested that are going, that our ratepayers are going to get to pay for if we vote for this increase?
Thank you, Mr. Helm. So, the capital improvements, particularly that this rate study is going to finance, are the capital improvements that are listed in our 10-year capital plan. The 10-year capital plan we've done for the last two years is a pretty substantial list of water main upgrade projects. They're primarily infrastructure improvement projects. If we were to not vote for any of these options tonight, I would definitely have to go back and reassess that entire capital plan and try to figure out what we're not going to be able to do. Now, I put all those things on the capital plan because I feel like they're going to need to be done. Not addressing these infrastructure issues is basically kicking the can down the road. And I hope that answers your question.
Let's hear, it looks like Lynn may be able to tell us a little bit more detail about the can that would be kicked down the road.
Yeah, so, page 35 of the study report that was given to you in the last meeting. So, in your agenda packets, you were given a 35-page report of the study. And on that report, it shows you the 10-year capital for water and the 10-year for sewer. So, for example, the 10-year includes the repairs, the town meeting, we just voted a project for the Sandwich Street Bridge Water Main, at one point, almost 1.8 million. We have a new source of water for about 6.5 million planned for fiscal '26 and down the road. So, I mean, there's several projects, but those are a couple of the large ones. And fiscal '28 is federal furnace replacement well and treatment. And then, fiscal '29, there's rehab Indian Hill water tank. So, those are in this five-year recommendation. Sewer, there's some others, but you didn't want to talk about sewer.
So, Lynn, a question for you. My, well, I've been on the planet for 65 years, but let's say 45 years of being a taxpayer in various places around the United States. I've never found that rates, once increased, or taxes, once increased, ever go down. What are the chances? Is this guaranteed for five years, and that's it? Or five years from now, is somebody going to come and say, "We need to keep increasing the rates"?
So, based on the five-year capital plan that is anticipated, and based on certain, you know, cost of living increases on the operating budget, based on the debt service associated with these projects, but each of these obviously has to be voted on every year at town meeting. So, town meeting may not vote on something, but town meeting is in April, at the beginning of April. So, if something didn't get voted, then we would adjust accordingly, you know, on this five-year plan with regards to any future increases to the water rates.
Well, I guess my question, and maybe this is more appropriate for Mr. Gordon, is what happens after five years? Is we're just not going to improve any more capital?
No.
There's not going to be any more capital?
We have a 10-year plan. It's just that the rate study was just on the first five years.
Okay, so, we have other improvements that are going to be done in the following five years, but this rate plan doesn't really take those into account?
No. This is a five-year study on the first five years of the capital plan.
Okay, thank you.
If I might just add one thing, on the waterside, the reason, a big part of the reason the water is larger than the sewer is because right now, the water is, I project, going to run a structural deficit in the coming years if you don't do rate adjustments, meaning its rates are currently too low for its existing expense levels. Now, that's something that if the select board does not elect to amend it sooner or later, the DOR comes and will amend it for you, since it's an enterprise fund. It's intended to support itself, or the second correction for that situation is the town begins to appropriate funds out of its general fund into the water enterprise fund. Those are the ways that that can be corrected. And my, the intention of these rate increases is to make sure that the enterprise fund is self-funding in perpetu, or not in perpetuity, but at least for the next five years.
Other questions?
I don't think the presentation is done yet.
Right.
Sue has more.
Well, I was gonna, I was told not to move on to sewer, but I'm happy to move on to sewer. So, sewer, because of, because of the relatively larger fixed charge and the fact that you have... have absolutely no differential between the smallest and the larger users, if you were to adopt the AWWA fees, the impact is much, much larger than on the water. On the water, you currently have a fixed charge, you know, the ratio between the, the five-eighths-inch meter and the largest meter is around fifteen. On the sewer side, there is no ratio. The person with the largest sewer connection to the sewer system pays the exact same quarterly fixed charge as every single residential connection in town. And this change will correct that system, bring it up to what are currently industry standards. And what you can see here, this table set up exactly as the water was, um, the big takeaways are, you can see that obviously with a five percent overall revenue change and the correction of, or not correction, but the amendment of the relative tier values on the volumetric side, that five percent gets spread out differentially between the different tiers. But overall, the number of revenue that comes out of the volumetric charges with this blend, which is switching, as I said, the relative values, comes out at overall five percent. On the fixed charges, you can see there is a vast difference, and this is a big change for a lot of customers. You can see that for a five-eighths-inch customer, their current quarterly charge of eighty-seven fifty can go down by almost twenty-eight percent, can go down to sixty-three dollars a quarter. And the reason that is, and the, these two sets, meaning the current fixed charge schedule and the one under option one, generate the same revenue based on the existing customer base. And, and option one just adjusts the, the relative value of these charges based on the size of the connection. As I said, it's a, a pretty accepted industry standard. The second option again is, we just keep your existing structure. We don't modify it in any respect other than changing what we expect its overall revenue target to be. And on sewer, obviously, your, your volumetric numbers are going up at about five percent. Your fixed charges are going up at exactly five percent. And then again, as on the water side, we provide you with a third option, because some of, as you can see, some of the larger, and there's not very many of them, but some of the larger customers for sewers especially, uh, are going to have a pretty significant increase in their quarterly fixed charge. And if we want to blend that in over time, that's really what the alternate option one is. It's a three-year, uh, bleed-in.
Mr. Mahoney?
Uh, Peter, Lynn Orr, I'm sorry.
Toby.
Toby. Can you give us some examples of who, um, the three-inch, the four-inch, the sixty-eight and the ten-inch sewer customers are?
So, as you can probably imagine, places like Soya's Reach, the Oasis, Harbor Walk, um, Hanover Colony, a, a lot of these larger buildings have three-inch meters. I think we have thirty-something of them in total. Um, there is only one ten-inch meter that is down at Holtek. Um, I'm not sure how much water they're putting through that meter currently. And I think we only have five of the eight-inch meters. Um, one or two of them are in schools. We have one at Squirrel Run, the golf course. Um, there was one at Casabella, which is a fifty-five-plus development community. Um, Mayflower Village has one of these eight-inch fire, uh, protectus meters. Is this, is this helpful?
Yeah, no, no, I just want to get the, uh, the just, uh, your initial comments are there was large, um, residential, looks like rental units or condos and, um, you know, the fortyBs where those individuals would be subject to a fee and that the owner of these properties would be sending in the quarterly bill payment? Sound like who?
Yeah, I mean, at a, at a rental, I would, you know, the developer who owns the apartment building would be paying the bill, and I'm sure it's included in the rent.
Exactly, yes.
Any other...
That's good, that's good.
Okay. Uh, did we interrupt you, or are you...
I, I'm happy to keep going. Sorry, I...
Let's keep going, and then we can ask a question.
And, and just to, to address that very question about, you know, multi-unit parcels and such, one of the implicit, uh, especially on the sewer, one, one, on the sewer side, one of the implicit sort of things you have to acknowledge about your existing structures, like, let's say you have a, let's say, a fifty-unit property. Right now, that fifty-unit property is connected to the sewer. Their fixed charge is the exact same as a single-family home. And so, when you adjust the unit size, their fixed charge is two percent of what a single-family homeowner pays. And, and that is an imbalance in the existing system that we're intending to fix, so. Okay. So, one thing we were also asked to do was to give a sort of an idea of what, what happens to overall utility bills. Now, my apologies, because this chart does include both water and sewer, and a big chunk of the, uh, overall costs are on the sewer side, as you can see, but since it is in stack bar format, you can see for each, this would be for a, um, a customer using fifteen units per quarter, which is about sixty percent of all customers in the, basically sixty percent of all customers in Plymouth use fifteen units or less. So, this is the large, not large majority, but this is the majority of your users, and the impact that you see with the changes, um, gets a little bit more pronounced the smaller of a customer you have, because the, the relative impact of the change in fixed charge increases as an overall percentage of their, of their bills. So, on the right-hand side, option one recommended. The, the thing, I'm sorry?
Left-hand side.
Uh, did I say right? My apologies. Um, the, on the left-hand side, option one, which is the recommended, um, basically the recommended set of rates. What, you know, the big takeaway is for an average residential customer with a five-eighths-inch meter, using fifteen units a quarter, basically, they're going to see a somewhat significant overall cost of service drop. Now, that's true, uh, to, uh, to Mr. Helm's point, um, it's true for the combined services, but what, what the change also does is it really levels out the increase on the water side. It does reduce the rate of increase on the water side. It's just not as dramatic as on the sewer. So, um, so really, the left-hand side is option one recommended in stack bar. This is the overall annual cost of water and sewer service. This middle chart is what those overall costs look like for the exact same customer, if you keep the exact same rate structure you currently have, and all those numbers are calculated in the report. And then really, on the right-hand side, that's the alternate. That's the three-year transition from the AW, or, or from your existing system to the AWWA standard and the new, um, tier differentials. And, and what you can see is obviously, I think one of the goals of alternate three was to sort of minimize the changes for, for most customers and give some of the larger customers who right now, if you make an immediate shift, they, they might see a very significant bill change, and, and giving them a chance to get used to that and blend it in over a period of years.
Questions?
Yeah, we'll stay there.
Is this the end of the presentation? Are we interrupting you?
No, it's not. We have one final exciting slide for you.
Okay.
Okay, on septicage receiving. It is, uh, on sewer again, so it's not most of the customers we're talking about tonight, but sewage receiving rates or septicage receiving rates, which is where, you know, sledge pumpers come and actually discharge to the treatment plant. They're an important revenue, uh, stream to, uh, to the wastewater utility. We have, as part of this, we've made the assumption and would recommend that you increase them at the same rate as the revenue increase recommendation that we've included in all of our other rates, and that the table at the top shows you what that would look like over the course of the next five years, going from six and a half cents, uh, up to six point, uh, six point eight cents, um, all the way up to twenty twenty-nine, which will be eight point three cents. And just to give you a sense, because septicage receiving can be a price-sensitive, um, you know, price-sensitive topic, cause the people who are delivering the goods are on wheels, and they can take it wherever they can discharge the, um, you know, whatever makes the most sense for them economically. Uh, you know, they won't go too far, but they certainly might drive an extra twenty miles to get a cheaper rate. Um, but this just gives you, some of these are not close, but they're all in the Commonwealth, um, an idea of what other discharger or other plants, um, basically charge for these services, so. And that is the end of the formal presentation. And I'm happy to take questions.
The only thing we didn't mention was the summer rate.
Oh. What is the only thing that he didn't mention?
I forgot to mention, we're, on the, uh, on the, the, the rates, my apologies. You can see, we, we put in, um, summertime rates for each of these. It was something that we were asked to look at.
Yeah.
Again, as we, um, as we talked about last time, um, right now, the use of a summertime rate is not built into the overall revenue requirement of the water utility, and so if you were to adopt them, we would project that you would probably raise somewhere in the two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-thousand-dollar a year in additional revenue for the utility. But right now, that, that revenue, because we aren't sure of what the impact would be, does not then impact the rates that are, that are seen in the remainder of the, uh, the rate structure. Yes?
Mr. Mahoney?
Toby?
Yes.
So, if, I understand the summer rates, it's a ninety-day window. Is it a July first to September thirtieth thing?
I believe that's exactly what, what the intention was, and that was the analysis that we did on the historical billing.
Uh, uh...
So, it is, it's only...
How does that work?
I'm sorry.
From an administrative... Is there a significant amount of incremental work to enforce that, or is this just, this is all just done through computers? The meters are read and...
Yes.
Is it, is it ramp up for ninety days and then...
That is correct.
What did I say? Uh, come October first, it's back to...
Just that particular quarter, that particular quarter's rate table would be adjusted for the summer rate, and then it would go back. The rate table would be adjusted back to the other rates.
You're just raising the price for ninety days.
And you have a ballpark, but really not definitive, potential amount of incremental revenue.
Mm-hmm.
But you don't have a potential savings of gallons.
That's correct. That's correct. I mean, the, the one thing you, you can say about right now, the demands on the larger users in Plymouth is they, they don't appear to be incredibly price-sensitive. And so, you know, this is not uncommon. There are other locations in the Commonwealth that I'm familiar with that have much more steeply-inclined rate block structures, meaning, you know, their top gallon is charged a much higher multiple than you have here, and it does not impact watering patterns. There are some people who are just willing to pay the price, and, um, so there, there is no good data that would suggest for me to even give you a guess about what the saving, water savings would be. I will say this, by re-establishing the tier differential within the actual volumetric rate structure itself, I suspect where that's going to impact your smaller users, that probably has a higher likelihood of driving a little conservation than does the, uh, the imposition of the summer rate, but I'm unsure.
So, why do you say that if, if eighty percent of the water that goes out is in the first two tiers?
First three tiers.
First three tiers, okay. And we'll go to the first two, which is going to capture the majority of the seniors and the residents in the community, correct?
That's correct.
So, why would you say this is going to drive a significant amount of conservation without a summer rate increase? Because...
So...
Those, if you go back to the bar graph, you have year two...
I'm sorry, oh...
Keep going.
You're talking, this one?
Yeah, right there, back there.
Okay.
So, you have year two, if you look at option one, you have year two going down, and then year...
But that, that's an average bill on, on, on a person who's only slightly out of tier one.
Okay, only slightly.
And I don't think, right, and, and that's, you're, that wouldn't be, so the, the change in the tier differentials that we're talking about?
Yes.
Really are impacting more tier three and four, and, and really in truth, more tier three than, than tier four.
Okay, where we've gotten away from the majority of our residential users, correct?
That's correct. So, wi- within, if you look, let me, this is the curse of running two screens. Looking at this chart again, just to remind you, so what this shows you is seventy-seven percent of the bills, meaning really seventy-seven percent of residential users, their average bill over the course of the year is entirely within tier one and tier two.
Correct.
That's the thirty-eight percent of tier one, thirty-nine. The, the third tier, there's still a significant amount of water in use there, and that, that might be people who irrigate occasionally that could, you know, receive a pricing signal. And then, I, I suspect, I don't have, you know, there is no proof as to what a hypothetical rate will do to consumption. I mean, there is, you know, the, the concept of demand elasticity is incredibly common, um, but I know in water usage especially, as it relates to irrigation, in areas where the irrigation is used by, um, people who can afford it, I have seen little evidence that it, that it drives large conservation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the presenters at this time? Uh, okay. I, could we go to, uh, the water rate chart?
Sure.
So, just so I'm clear, and I'm clear that others are clear, we have everyone clear. Um, so there's thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five hookups that are a five-eighth, eight, seven inch.
Five-eighths inch, yes.
Right? So, that's their fixed cost is going to go down seven point one percent.
Yes.
And then, if I remember that prior slide you were just at, forty percent of users would fall within volumetric tier one, zero to ten? Is that right?
So, a five-eighth inch, a, a five-eighths-inch meter can easily carry you into tier four if it's spread out over time.
But I guess my question is, how many are a majority of our customers in five-eighths of an inch hookup territory and tier one, zero to ten? Or, is that, how many of our customers are in that scenario?
So, I don't have a matrix, but I mean, right there, looking at the numbers that you're looking at, probably ninety-three to ninety-four percent of your customers are five-eighths-inch meter customers.
Okay.
Okay? And we know from this earlier table, let me just scroll. Thirty-eight percent of your bills go out with water in tier one, which means they are between zero and ten.
Right. Okay. And then, and then thirty-nine percent are the next tier up.
Are between ten and twenty-two and a half.
Okay. So, and you had said, I think, earlier that with, uh, for a, a five-eighths-inch hookup in a tier one consumption?
Mm-hmm.
That you would have eighteen dollars and ninety cents in water charges and twenty-five dol- under the current scheme, eighteen dollars and ninety cents in water charges, twenty-five dollars in fixed costs.
And, and that's per quarter?
Per quarter, right.
Right.
And under the new model?
Yes.
It would be twenty dollars and thirty cents in water charges?
That's correct.
And twenty-three dollars and twenty-two cents in...
Fixed charges.
Fixed charges. So, my math suggests that for those people, they're actually saving thirty-eight cents.
It's minimal.
But it's a savings, not an increase for those people.
That's correct. And, and those rates will go up over the course of the next five years by definition.
Right.
But, um, it's not as if those are going to be the rates for them. This is for fiscal twenty-five only.
Correct. Right, but for, considering a, a large number, not a, not a majority, but a large number of folks would fall into that exact category.
Absolutely.
It's not a, it's, it's, it would be unfair to characterize this as a increase across the board, given that some people, thirty-eight cents, still thirty-eight cents?
I, I would wager a guess that, that probably at least forty to fifty percent of customers are either going to have a minimal bill decrease on water, or they're going to be basically exactly the same.
Okay.
And the increases for the next twenty percent are going to be very marginal.
Okay.
Because so many of the, so many of your customers are actually going to be getting a small decrease in the fixed charge, and that offsets a portion of, you know, the, the increase in rates all the way up until you get to the larger increase in tier three that we were talking about, where that might drive some conservation.
Okay. And then, could we go to this slide but for sewer? So, we have, am I reading minimum charges quarterly for these hookups? We have tiers that no one is in?
That's correct.
We're just ready for that?
We're ready for it.
Okay. All right. Um, and then, again, the vast majority are five-eighths of an inch. Um, what about in terms of volumetric? Where do the, where do most sewer customers fall in? In tier one again?
Most sewer customers still fall in tiers one and two. Most sewer customers still fall in tiers one and two.
Okay. And so those customers would see-
A decrease in their bill and a pretty substantial one. And it's simply because of the, of the 20, you know, $24 a quarter decrease in fixed charges by, by applying appropriately larger charges on large customers.
Okay. So in terms of the residential properties that have, for this sewer, that have a hookup bigger than 5/8s, are those apartment buildings? Or are there private, like, single-family homes that would have that type of a hookup?
There may be. So as I said, usually, usually the size of the water meter, which is the connection size on, on both utilities, a 5/8 inch meter will feed a very large house. As long as it doesn't have a very large irrigation system or something along those lines, right? It's all related to the num-, you know, the maximum gallons per minute that can go through the meter.
Okay.
And so in cases where you have either potential really large demands based on building characteristics, or they want additional capacity because they know they're going to use water in a way that's, that's outside of normal bounds. You know, as you can see, I mean, the vast majority of customers get connected to the 5/8 inch level. So.
Okay. Any other questions? I did, I was informed that there was the, the former chair of the Water Conservation Commission had wanted to make some remarks if they would like to take the microphone. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Eric Cody, I'm former Chair of the Water Conservation Committee from 2020 to '22. And I don't think I'll need three minutes. I hadn't seen this before. If you could put the water chart back up, the one that's comparable to this? I just want to say that from the standpoint of the work the Water Conservation Committee did and what we presented to this board in, at the end of 2022, that this is a big step in the right direction. That seasonal summer rate thing to the right, I was going to say, is option one through the chair? Is option one the one that's being recommended?
Option one is the recommended, and, but we can apply a summer rate to any of these options because as I, as I've said a couple times, all the options are revenue equal.
Okay. That idea of a summer rate has been on the table here in Plymouth for over 15 years. The, the big thing that's been missing up until now, we've had a very progressive water rate, but it had no seasonal characteristic to it. So it was not aligned with the pattern of usage that we have, which is summer-driven. It draw, it drives both the short-term and the long-term costs. I won't go into details, but that summer rate will help us capture an opportunity that ultimately could be as much as 250 million gallons of what I would call, and the committee would have called, excess summer water usage. So I encourage the board to seriously consider implementing a summer rate. And then to monitor it carefully through the work of the Water Division to see what early results tell us about where it should go. But that would be a huge step toward a conservation opportunity that has not been previously realized here in Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to add one thing, from the engineering side, I'm a recovering engineer actually in, in this life. The one thing that you, you can see occasionally, you know, steeply inclined rate block structures do is they can shave peak demands, which can delay the need for investments in new sources, which Lynn alluded to is one of the, the larger things on the capital program. And so that, that can be one effective use of things like summertime rates and very, very steeply inclined rate block structures. But that's it.
Ms. Barrett?
I just wanted to summarize for this presentation that we would, I think, basically be looking at you making a vote for water, one for sewer, and like which option you would like to do.
Yeah.
And then a vote on the septicage, and then a vote on the summer rate. Because the summer rate could be applied to any of those options for water or sewer.
I think there wasn't a sewer summer rate, was there?
No, just water.
Just water, right.
Yep, just water.
Okay. So I was, well, we're not there yet, but I was considering having the main motion be the rate structure and then the, a potential amendment being whether to adopt a summer rate as part of that. Do you want, but you're suggesting, it doesn't matter really, procedure that's six in one hand, half a dozen the other. Okay. I have questions about alternate option number one? Because I don't fully understand the, your answer earlier. I've been thinking about. So my understanding is that the current strategy, although we're only voting on one year, is we want to go up 9% this year, 9% next year, 9% the following year, et cetera.
Yes.
So you're saying that this phases it in? So does that mean, does that mean this year over three years? Does that mean this year you're going up 3%? Next year you're going up 12?
No.
How are you, what's the first?
Let me go ahead. I, I actually prepared for this one because it is a complex concept. So these are the three-year transitions.
Okay.
But the, the, the reason I didn't put this in is, to the presentation in general, is simply because you're not voting on three years of rate increases tonight. And so the recommendations for the three-year transition that are early in the report are reflected in the fiscal '25 column of the respective water and sewer tables on this slide. But basically, what, what this process does, it takes you from the current rates and transitions basically a third of the way to what the '27 rates were going to be under the option one. And then in '28 and '20, so in '27, '28, and '29, basically you are at option one if you do this, this transition.
But that FY '25 number, my recollection for volumetric charges, zero to 10, was that it went up 14 cents under traditional option one. And now it's going up 16 cents. Is that right? It's actually more expensive in the near term for most customers?
Minorly so. But if, if, yeah, I guess that, that's true. For most customers, yes, is your, is the answer.
All right. That's the answer I needed for that one.
Okay.
Okay. Can we go back to the water rate chart? Okay, excellent. Do we have any other questions by members of the board? All right. So this, this has been, we've had a lot of numbers. So under our procedural rules, the chair can make a motion. So I will elect to do so. I will elect to make a motion that we adopt fiscal year 2025, option one. And then I will entertain, if the board is interested, the option of a summer rate as an amendment to the main motion. But we will, but my proposed main motion is fiscal year 2025, option one.
I'll second that.
All right. It has been moved. It has been seconded. Do we have any members of the board that would wish to make a summer rate amendment? Mr. Mahoney has moved. I will second the summer rate. So now we are, have the amendment, which is, the main motion is FY '25, option one, and whether or not we are going to adopt a summer rate. Do we have any discussion from members of the board as to whether to adopt a summer rate as part of the main motion? Mr. Helm?
What would be the summer rate that we're adopting?
So you would, at tier one, it would stay at 203 for most customers, no change?
So as presented on this chart?
Correct. So tier two goes up 31 cents. And then 38 or so, and then 43. All right. Any other questions or comments about whether or not to adopt a summer rate as part of the main motion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote as to the amendment. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote as to whether or not we should adopt a summer rate as part of the main motion?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We have amended the main motion to adopt FY '25, option one, to include a summer rate increase. Do we have any discussion as to the motion as amended? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote as to the motion as amended for the new rates?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
I vote yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have adopted option one for fiscal year 2025 with the summer rate. Thank you. That brings us, can we have the slide for the sewer rates? All right. So we have FY '25, option one. There is no summer rate here. The chair will make a motion to adopt FY '25, option one, as the proposed rate for FY '25 for the sewer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Helm has seconded. Any discussion as to whether or not we should adopt FY '20, '25, option one as the new rate for the sewers? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have adopted FY '25, option one, as the sewer rate for FY '25. Can we have the septicage slide next, please? All right. So the septicage slide includes a proposed rate of, if I'm reading this correctly, it would be point zero, well, 6.8 cents per gallon, correct?
Yes.
All right. And I would point out in the chart that would still put us below the rate of local competitor Middleborough, as well as Falmouth and Barnstable. So that's something to be proud of, I suppose. So I will make a motion that we adopt the septicage receiving rate recommendation of point, well, 6.8 cents per gallon charge.
I'll second it.
Mr. Bletzer has seconded. Any discussion about whether or not we should adopt a 6.8 cent per gallon charge for septicage receiving rate? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have adopted the recommended septicage receiving rate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm not sure. I'll leave it on.
All right. That brings us into the next item on our agenda, the Plymouth Water Division Outdoor Watering Restrictions.
And hopefully this is a lot less confusing. Every spring, we come to the Select Board as acting water commissioners and ask them to implement our seasonal watering restrictions. The reason we do so is because Special Condition 7 of our Water Management Act Withdrawal Permit requires Plymouth to implement non-essential outdoor water restrictions from May 1st to September 30th. These restrictions are designed to minimize withdrawals from the aquifer, promote conservation, and prevent exceedance of the permitted withdrawal limit. And that is why we ask for the outdoor watering restrictions.
Okay. Any questions? So just to highlight, what exactly are the proposed restricted period?
So the restrictions are, basically it's every other day watering during the period of May 1st through September 30th. Outdoor watering shall be restricted to no more than 60 minutes per day. Even-numbered homes shall be permitted to use outdoor water for 60 minutes on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. Odd numbers home, odd number homes Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. Five to seven in the morning or five to seven at night.
Okay. Any questions from any members of the board in regards to the proposed water restrictions? Mr. Helm?
How is this monitored and enforced?
The enforcement is tough. You know, with the, with the staff I have, they usually report if they see anybody, you know, violating these restrictions. Surprisingly, the biggest, the most common way that I find out about violations is from other people's neighbors. You know, some people follow these restrictions and don't like to see their neighbors who don't follow them. Enforcement usually comes with a phone call or sometimes a visit to the home. That, that type of enforcement usually goes over pretty well and usually works. But that, you know, with regards to full-on policing this thing, there's not a lot we can do. But just hope that people, you know, respect the restrictions and follow the rules.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the proposed watering restriction for outdoor water?
Second.
Mr. Helm has moved. Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Any discussion from members of the board in regards to the outdoor watering restrictions? Hearing and seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. We have adopted the proposed outdoor watering restrictions. Thank you. That brings us into the next item on our agenda, the Plymouth Water Division Water Balance Program.
So as you recall, we met here on the 16th and discussed the Water Balance Program. The Water Balance Program is a conservation-based initiative to both conserve water usage and mitigate infrastructure expenses throughout the town's water system. Earlier, we talked about those capital improvement projects that, that are on the 10-year plan. The new source, the, the water main upgrades, things of that nature. Proceeds from the Water Balance Program can definitely help to fund some of those, and again, mitigate the cost of the town. Kendra did, Kendra Martin, the Water and Sewer Engineer, did a very good job presenting that that evening. It wasn't my intention to fully re-present it again tonight. But we left that, this, this question on the table. And I wasn't approached, or I don't know if anybody else was approached about any specific questions you had regarding the Water Balance Program. But if you do have any, I'd love to answer them for you.
Okay, let's see. Do we have any questions on the proposed Water Balance Program? Mr. Helm?
Just a matter of clarification, because this, this technically, and not really so far below the surface or unclearly, is an impact fee. Okay, which, how, am I correct in understanding from the previous presentation the other week that there are towns that have implemented this and have gotten, and the state has not told them that they are in violation of statutes?
There are many communities who have implemented a Water Balance Program. It can be seen as an impact fee. But we do give the developers or the builders options other than, you know, providing us with a check. And so we like not to think of it as just another impact fee, such as a, a systems development fee. But in many cases, that's exactly what it may turn out to be.
Okay. I, that, my only reservation was going down a path that ended in a brick wall called the state, saying you've implemented an impact fee. But if, you know, other, other towns have had it for longer than a year, let's say, longer than, than it took, takes to hit a dinosaur on the tail and it gets to their head to wake them up? So, I mean, if you're, you're confident about that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
All right. Any, any other questions on the Water Balance Program? Mr. Mahoney moves that we adopt the Water Balance Program as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Helm has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this was a lot of water talk tonight.
It is.
I appreciate all of your time.
Thank you very much. That brings us into the Plymouth DPW Solid Waste Rates. Since we are joined once again by Mr. Coyle, thank you.
Bill Coyle, DPW Director. This is one that should hopefully be easy for us to move forward with. We are not recommending any increases in the enterprise fees. We have a healthy balance of just over a million dollars currently. And we don't feel as though there's any increases warranted at this time.
Okay. So, any questions? All right. Mr. Mahoney has no questions and has moved approval. Any, do we have any seconds?
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Helm has seconded. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
Finally, some good news. Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
That brings us into the Plymouth Police Department Comfort Dog Donation.
Good evening. I'm not here to talk about water or sewage, I'm here to talk about puppies. Good way to end the night.
Yes.
And I want to thank you for allowing me on the agenda tonight. I know it's, it was less than 48 hours, but we're kind of on a tight, tight schedule here. So, we have the unique opportunity, we've been offered a gift from Atlantic Subaru, a gift of a Labrador Retriever dog, one of a number of communities that the dealership is looking to give back, with the caveat that is assigned, or the dog is assigned to, or an SRO or one of the schools. Yes, one of them is the one they're looking to donate. It's, her name is Baja. But anyways, so, the reason I'm here tonight is we're under a time restriction with the dealership. They're looking to make their donation within the next two weeks. We have a training schedule coming up, and we want to be ready for the next school year. Going back to my original comment, is one of the caveats is the dog needs to be assigned to an SRO, of which we have six of them. So, in speaking with Superintendent Campbell, he's aware of our current comfort dog program, sees the benefits in it, and asked, or suggested, if we do agree with this program, we're going to assign the dog with Officer Smolinski at the South High School. The reason being is the proximity to the South Middle School as well. So, the dog will be used at both locations on the same campus if needed. So, I'm just asking for your permission or your willingness to accept this gift, and we can move along with this program.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Bletzer?
Chief, can't we take all three? I, I, how are we going to split these three up? I mean, look at that picture right there.
Well, as I said, I have six SROs.
That is unbelievable. Beautiful.
I have six SROs, and I have five asking me for their own. So, you know.
I'd hate, I'd hate to split them up, but.
Right.
This is great. This is a great.
So, the donation includes the dog, the training, and the equipment that goes along with it.
That's very nice.
So.
Any other questions? All right. So, we have a request to accept the donation of one of these three dogs.
Gladly make a motion.
Mr. Bletzer has moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Mr. Helm, after due consideration, has seconded the acceptance of the dog. Right, right. Tough road to hoe, but hoe what you will. All right. So, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I will call for a vote. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, that brings us into the next item on our agenda, that being public comments. Do we have any members of the public who wish to make comments? Yes, please approach the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Rich Cirque Precinct Two Town Meeting Member. I'm distressed by the comments made by Select Board Member Harry Helm about CPC Chairman Bill Cohen, as reported in the Plymouth Independent on April 27. Mr. Cohen apparently misstated to the Springtown Meeting the number of housing units that would count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory at the multifamily project being constructed at 132, 134 Court Street. He stated that 40 units would count towards the inventory, but it subsequently came to light that only 10 would count. Upon being so informed, Mr. Cohen apologized to the CPC, to the Select Board, and to the town as a whole. The CPC article will now have to be revoted at the Fall Town Meeting. For more than 20 years, Mr. Cohen has been the face of the CPC at Town Meeting. During this time, he has shepherded countless CPC articles through Town Meeting. He's earned many times over the respective Town Meeting for his institutional knowledge of the CPA and for his diligence in presenting funding requests. From where we meet tonight, it's a short distance to the Community Preservation Act's most recent accomplishments under Mr. Cohen's stewardship. The Spire Center across the street, Stevens Field on Warren Avenue, and the renovation of an office building into a homeless shelter in the industrial park, on Industrial Park Road. In spite of all of this, it's been clear that for some time, Mr. Cohen has operated with a bullseye on his back. He's become the target of the Select Board for political reasons. His current term on the CPC expires this year, and yet Mr. Helm talks about removing him from the CPC. If the Select Board is dissatisfied with his performance on the CPC, they can simply vote not to reappoint him. Instead, again for political reasons, they're intent on transforming what appears to be an innocent mistake into an intentional misrepresentation, which it was not.
Thank you, Mr. Cirque. Any other members of the public wishing to make public comment at this time? Yes, please take the microphone.
Everett Malaguti, Precinct Two Town Meeting. And thankfully, Mr. Coyle is in the audience as well too, still. I took a trip down Prestige Way the past few days, and I haven't yesterday or today yet, but there has been a growing accumulation of furniture and litter at the very end of Prestige Way from the Robert J. Way, I mean, Williams C. Gould Way intersection with Prestige Way, and it's basically like about one or two living rooms full of debris and trash. So, I'm just wondering if there has been any acknowledgement on there to remove that, because even though it is an industrial, commercial area that's out of the way, it's still dumping in a blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Any other members of the public wishing to make any public comments at this time? I see none physically. Do we have any virtually? We have none. That brings us into the Town Managers Report. Mr. Brindisi?
All right, great, thank you. So, let me start by beginning to announce the beginning of our summer pavement management program. It actually started yesterday. Right now, the DPW is working on 24 roads, which encompasses approximately 17 miles of chip sale. So, again, this is just the chip sale program. In the following months, we'll be focusing on the reclamation and the Millen overlay program. But what's important to note is that of these 24 roads, and we're going to post this on the website tomorrow, so every property owner on these streets know when their street will be chip sailed, they need to understand that the road is going to look worse before it looks better. But that's, that's part of the chip sale program. So, again, that started today, yesterday, and will continue for the next coming months. I want to also let the board know that the water street project continues to progress. We're actually at the last phase of the project, so final coring will begin this week, and the last pipe will be laid. We are expecting that the street will be cleaned up and paved by Memorial Day. Again, that's weather-dependent. So, as you all know, we have a June 30th deadline, but we are hoping that if the weather holds up, we'll have the road put back together by Memorial Day. So, again, things have gone very well on this last leg of the project. As far as Butler Road goes, we also are expecting that road to reopen by Memorial Day. At this point, they're just adding the guardrail and the top coat. For those of you that had the opportunity to attend the downtown traffic study last Thursday, it was well-attended. From what I understand, there were over 60 individuals in attendance. There was a lot of great feedback, and so, we're going to use this information that we received that evening to inform the final study, and we'll present that to the board once that is complete. In addition, folks in the Taylor Ave area should know that the Taylor Ave Restrooms, the trailer, will be operational by May 17th, well before the Memorial Day holiday. And then, the chief is still here. So, starting next Monday, the police department will be installing their satellite police station down at the EOC. So, they spent the better part of the past year creating the satellite police location. It'll be open from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then again from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for residents to come in and talk to a police officer. Again, that starts next Monday, May 6. And then, the chief also has began, that's going to start this month as well, what is known as the Community Connection Team. The chief was able to receive six volunteers from the police department. Each will be assigned a specific village. Each one of those officers will attend the neighborhood meetings, the steering committee meetings, and provide information to folks that are in attendance, take information back, not only to the police department, but certainly other departments, and really try to address community concerns, quality of life issues on a regular basis. So, thank the chief for putting this team together, because we think it's going to go a long way of, you know, connecting our residents to everything that's going on in-town government. And just as a reminder, tax bills are due tomorrow. So, I'll say that again, as a reminder, tax bills are due tomorrow. We're trying to avoid those demand notices from going, from going out. And then, another item folks should be aware of, the town clerk now has posted the voting record for all town meeting members on the website. So, those that are interested in seeing the voting record for each one of the 162 town meeting members, that is now posted on the website. And last, folks need to be aware that the town clerk's office has mailed out over 9,000 ballots for the local election in May. So, again, just so folks that are looking out for those, sometimes mail gets lost. Just be aware that those ballots have gone out this week, and so they should have them within the next couple of days. Pending any questions, that's all I have.
All right. Any questions for the town manager? All right. Hearing and seeing none, that would bring us into Select Board Open Discussion. Any new business? Any letters? Mr. Bletzer?
I just want to make a comment again, and I want to commend the DPW. I want to commend the chief of police here tonight, town manager, assistant town manager, for all the work they're doing, and all the good things, all the positive things that are happening in Plymouth, okay? I love this town, I appreciate it, and unfortunately, some people just look for negative things to comment on, and it's really sad. But, that's the way it is today. But I appreciate the work that this administration is doing, my fellow board members, what they're doing, Chairman Quintal, who can't be with us because he has a family matter. So, I just want to thank everybody for that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bletzer. Any old business? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business for the evening?
So moved.
Mr. Helm has moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mahoney has seconded. Mr. Bletzer, how do you vote as to whether or not we should adjourn?
I vote yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We are adjourned for the evening at 8:26. Thank you, everyone.